Good evening and welcome to the October 21st session of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Paula Devine.
You'll place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for tonight's introduction invocation by Rabbi Backman, please. We thank those in public office and who have made great sacrifices for the public good on their own, as well as those made by their families, staff members, friends, and volunteers. We beseech God to guide all the men and women who offer themselves for public service, and we ask God to bless them in their worthy endeavors. Now you all be blessed with a sense of purpose and vision. We invoke the commitments that call us into service and sustain us through times of challenge, as well as times of joy, the values of freedom, civic duty, and personal responsibility, understanding and inclusiveness, and the values of dignity and respect for all the citizens of the city of Glendale. As we gather today, let our minds extend beyond these walls to all those who are vulnerable and all who need our support and advocacy. We extend our thanks for those who help others and those who make our city more livable and safe. May God bless our precious republic and our beloved city of Glendale. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for October 21st, 2014 regular meeting of Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 16, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Yes, what's next, please?
Under Presentations and Appointments, 3A Agenda Preview for the Meeting of Tuesday, October 28, 2014.
Ms. Beers?
Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council for the Glendale Housing Authority. We have no business agenda items. We do have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority to commence at 3:00 PM. Director of Community Services and Parks, and this is regarding the 2014 Homeless Continuum of Care Funding Application to HUD. That afternoon, we also have a joint meeting of the Successor Agency and the Glendale Economic Development Corporation, two items. Director of Economic Development, Glendale Arts Change Order for Labor in Connection with the Alex Theater Expansion Project, and a resolution of support for the 2022 World's Fair to be held in the city of Los Angeles. That afternoon, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Director of Public Works, conditional vacation of a portion of Laurel Street, and this is between Central Avenue and Brand Boulevard, for Glendale Memorial Hospital. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of items under consent. Director of Public Works, Stengel Ball Field Demolition and New Bleachers and Brand Park Rostrum Demolition Project. Director of Public Works, this is regarding Safe Routes to Schools. This is Phase Three. Director of Public Works, this is regarding the HVAC System Replacement Project. Chief of Police, Grant Program for Speed Enforcement, Distracted Driving Enforcement. Director of Human Resources, this is an extension of a contract to provide occupational medicine services. City Attorney, Biennial Report on the Need to Revise the City of Glendale's Conflict of Interest Code. Lastly, under Consent, Director of Library, Arts, and Culture, this is a grant appropriation of funds for the Adult Basic Education English as a Second Language and Adult Secondary Education Project. Under Action Items, Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks, this is regarding the Sports Complex Artificial Turf Replacement Project. And that evening, we also have a hearing. Director of Community Development, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission's Denial of Avariance, and this is located at 1229 Vista Superba Street. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. What's next on the agenda?
3B, Appointment of Diane Lamboleti to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Ms. Friedman?
Yes, I'm very happy to have had several very wonderful volunteers to serve on the Commission on the Status of Women. Diane Lamboleti is an attorney. She's been practicing law for 21 years. She brings a very unique skill set to the commission. She's very enthusiastic. She has a lot of wonderful ideas in terms of empowering women and girls and looking at some of the legalities of our programs. And most of you probably know that we were sued last year or threatened to be sued over the legality of our self-defense class that we do for women and girls at the YWCA. And she's very anxious to weigh in on those sorts of issues when they arise. And I know that she'll be a wonderful addition to the commission. I want to thank her for applying and for the other people who applied as well. And I would ask for, I will move that we appoint her to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Slappin? May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian. Yes, is Ms. Lamboleti present? Would she like to say a few words?
She is not here.
Okay. We look forward to having her at the next Commission of Status of Women meeting. Next item, we have a special guest here, our own State Senator Carol Lou, from Senate District 25. And she will be addressing state of the state for us today.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm very pleased to be here this evening to update you on the activities of Sacramento. As you know, we concluded the 2013-14 Legislative Session at the end of August. The legislature wound up its year by passing a new water bond and also bills to manage the state's groundwater. Also, we managed to ban single-use plastic bags, and we added a $330 million tax, film tax credit to support in-state filming. California continues to work its way out of the Great Recession. Unemployment is at its lowest rate since July of 2008. We experienced our third year with a budget surplus, and we put Proposition 2 on the November ballot to establish a rainy day fund. And we've begun rebuilding our decimated social service programs and education by increasing those budgets by $2.7 billion. Of course, we still face substantial challenges. Many Californians remain impoverished, including one and five children. Working families struggle to put food on the table, roofs over their heads. And my legislation to try to establish an earned income tax credit for the working poor did not pass this year, but I plan on doing it again next year. The drought and long-term management of our water resources will remain a challenge for years to come, hand in hand with climate change. And after much deliberation, the legislature and governor sent a water bond to the November ballot. And if passed by the voters, the bond will provide $900 million in new funding to further groundwater cleanup programs, $725 million in new funding for water recycling, $200 million for new storm water capture, $60 million in new funds for local conservancies, $100 million for water conservation and water efficiency programs, and $2.7 billion for water storage projects. We also enacted three groundwater management bills. And these provide for a locally-based approach to integrated sustainability plans and state support for our local groundwater districts. Cities continue to play an increasing pivotal role in managing all of our natural resources and incorporating sustainability and resiliency into their plans for growth. And I expect and support more resources, including financial and technical resources, to come your way this next year. Several measures the legislature passed and the governor signed into law that are intended to benefit cities include SB 628, the Bell-Wolt Bill Regarding Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts, expands IFDs to fund development and infrastructure. AB 1147 gives cities more control over regulating massage businesses and helps cities control or weed out the bad actors. AB 1767 protects conservancy lands, including, it increases fines for dumping, et cetera, and it primarily goes to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancies. And SB 955 adds human trafficking to the list of crimes for which a judge may order interception or wiretapping or electronic communications to find out what is really going on. I know all cities are still concerned with the implementation of AB 109 realignment. And as we seek to reduce our state prison population, we are increasing resources directed to alternative sentencing, rehabilitation, and treatment for the mentally ill. The state's 2014 budget established a $91 million recidivism reduction fund that includes $8 million in community grants for recidivism reduction, as well as other funds for in-prison rehabilitation, re-entry, and substance abuse programs. Fundamentally, these programs, coupled with early intervention, improved education systems, and pathways out of poverty, make more sense than housing nonviolent offenders at a rate of $60,000 a year. Our public education system is still in a great state of transition and sorely underfunded. California moved last year to local control funding and accountability, which is intended to close the achievement gap and create a better future for our students. And in the midst of this transition, we also are involved in Common Core implementation. And going forward, in the wake of the Vergara decision, we must refocus on teacher recruitment, preparation, professional development, and retention. It's been my practice to bring local school districts, and teachers, and parents, and other stakeholders together to share information, workshops, on emerging issues and new programs. And through these conversations, I can better inform Sacramento policymakers about the real-life, on-the-ground experiences of those people who are implementing state policies. This has been the purpose of my Common Core, LCFF, and Early Childhood Education Round Tables. And as you know, I chair the Senate Education Committee. And my focus legislatively and programmatically has been on early childhood education, advancing community schools, facilitating school-based health centers, increasing access to adult education, and improving student success in K-12, career and technical training, and higher ed. Cities are key partners in all of these activities with a growing trend toward local and regional collaboration to improve community quality of life and economic prosperity. This year, my own legislative agenda included streamlining lots of things. I won't go into them here, but all the bills that I put on the governor's desk were signed. Two of them were education bills that were enacted through the budget. And as you know, I don't believe in passing, that passing legislation is the only way to affect positive change. Several programs operating out of my district office include My Greening for the 21st Century, Pathways to Wellbeing and Economic Prosperity, and Small Business Development Programs to seek to advance a collective agenda through networking, sharing best practices, and developing joint projects. In closing, I offer you my services and my staff to answer questions you have about legislation, the budget, state agency program implementation. We try to alert you when there are grant opportunities that might interest you, and are always very happy to submit letters of support in your applications. And I believe you all know my district director, Talen Mangiolu. The legislature has recessed until December 1, 2014, so you see me out and about in my shorts. That's because I'm not working. But when, it will convene in December 1, when we swear in the new members. And this interim period is a time period where we come out and meet and greet and report to our local entities and make sure that we are communicating with you to hear your needs, try to answer your questions. And if I don't have the answers, certainly we'll seek to find them. So with that, I'm going to wish you a great fall and happy holidays. And I'm just happy to answer any of your questions you might have.
Thank you, Senator Lou. Yes.
Well, I just want to say that you represent a very large district. And I want to thank you for always being accessible and being here so much and being such a grassroots representative for the people of this city.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
I'd personally like to thank you, Senator Lou, for your advocacy for women and children, and of course, education, which is at my roots as well, and for your dedicated service, not only in Sacramento, but in this community. And I know that you've helped many of the commissions and nonprofits here and businesses. And thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Yeah.
Senator Lou, it's very important that you came and you gave this report because it's, our residents get a chance to hear that the issues that you deal with in Sacramento are not some esoteric, theoretical things. They're hard issues that have a tangible impact on our lives, everyday lives.
As you and as we, as a governments, build strong communities, that's what we're all about, building strong communities. And the communication is so important. So I appreciate the time here. And I know we don't always agree on every issue, but I do know that the dialogue continues. And that's what's really important, to hear each other.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to the residents of Glendale.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We have one item which is not on the agenda, but I'd like to include it on the agenda today. We have members from our Glenmore Canyon neighborhood who I'd like to invite to the podium, present their item today.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Clarence Major, and I'm a resident of Glendale for 10, 11 years, actually. And we just wanted to come and we're representing the Glenmore Canyon community. And we have about 200 homes in our area. And a few years ago, my wife and I, this is my wife Suzette, and we started the Neighborhood Watch program in our area. And we just walked around and talked to all our neighbors. And we actually, and I can't take a lot of credit because Suzette actually does all the work, but we have about 160 families on an email list. And so we've been having these block parties, and they've been pretty interesting and great. And this year, we've had over, close to 300 people at our block party. But anyway, we, I wanted to introduce some of the people here. Lucy and John, and one of our block captains, which we love him. He's an ex-marine.
Ex-marine, there's no ex, there's no.
Oh, yeah, sorry. But we just, we wanted to, and John has been great because he came in and really upped our game. And we've been giving raffles and, you know, just have a lot of community interaction. So it's been great. And Officer Sue Shine at the Police Department has been really helpful. So we just wanted to come and we had some of the, John, you can, you can.
I don't want to hog the speaker here.
That's okay. There's no problem. We wanted to thank Paula Devine and Erin Najarian for coming to our block party this year. We'd like to invite all of you to come next year. It's a nice opportunity to meet people in a very setting that's very conducive to just sitting there and talking with people. And they'll come up to you and say, hello, whatever. You know, there's no telling what they'll say, but please come next year. And we wanted to thank you for our great police department, our great fire department, and the great garbage collection. Just a really great city to live in. And.
And John's been in a lot of cities. He's been in a lot of cities in Los Angeles County. And when they moved in, their house is really, the nucleus is where we actually do our block party. So we were really nervous about who they, how it would be received. But he's really taken it on, and it's been a great thing.
Well, thank you, Clarence. So anyway, we saw the Los Angeles Business Journal magazine, and we said, wait a minute. Isn't that Erin? Isn't that Paula? And we were very proud of that. And we see that that is a symbol of Glendale and where Glendale is planning on going with you all here. So we wanted to give you all a present. Erin, I'm going to.
Now, can we bring these?
We will come to you.
Okay, great.
Come over here. Don't.
All right.
They're coming to us.
Appreciate your hard work.
Oh, excellent. Yeah. She couldn't be here today. I remember he had the loudspeaker here throughout the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, Mr. Mayor, before you all leave, yeah.
Don't leave.
Don't leave.
You're done. We're not done.
Yes, come on back.
I still have to, thank you.
Thank you. I just thank you, Clarence, and Suzette, and all of you. I know we went to that block party on Neighborhood Night Out. It was fantastic. It was one of the best and such a, just as you described it, such a wonderful neighborhood. And the people were friendly. Everything was just perfect. So thank you for, you know, it's so, such a pleasure, I think, to have people come and give us gifts and compliment us. And so we thank you. You're the best. Thank you.
And not only was it one of the best in all my years of going to the block parties, it was the best. I mean, there was a rock band, and there were burgers this thick on the grill, and pizza, and all sorts of drinks. I even brought my two teenage sons, who are a little bit leery about, yeah, Dad, sure, we're going to go to one of your parties. Even they had a great time. So keep it up, and I'll be sure to be there next year.
They divided us up around the city. It sounds like we got the, well, no, I went to some good parties, but this sounds pretty exceptional. We'll be fighting over it next year.
Yeah, see you next year.
Beyond the block party, just thank you for coming and, and I don't know.
A pleasure to meet you.
I mean, just very unusual. This doesn't happen too often. Believe me, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you guys next year.
Very special. Thank you. Very special.
Have a good evening.
Okay. What's next on the agenda?
I think we should end on that high note.
I know. Let's all go home.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Clerk?
Under Consent Items, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
I'm going to pull Item 4C, which was inadvertently included as a consent item. It is really an action item. So if someone will move the rest of the.
I'll move the remainder.
I'll second.
Can we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian. Yes, and we're going to treat 4C as an action item. So what's next on the agenda? City Council and Staff Comments. I'm sorry, just one second.
No, I was going to say, yeah, that's the right action, put it on an action item at the end.
Okay. Under City Council and Staff Comments. Ms. Devine?
Oh, okay. One of the best events that we have here in Glendale is the Glendale Rotary, Sunrise Rotary. Does the Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon. And this year, many of us attended that. And what a pleasure to see our heroes of the fire department honored for heroism. You know, I often say, we have the best police department and the best fire department anywhere. And it was proven so true that day, including the group of firemen, paramedics, who rescued an 11-year-old girl. Actually, the staff from Pacific Edison Pool rescued her from the pool, but it was the fire department that assisted staff and saved this little 11-year-old girl's life. And so it was, brings home how important our fire department is in everything that they do. And every day that they're on the job, we have to be sure, we can be sure that we are in good hands. And I just want to thank the fire department very much for all that you do, and you are all heroes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Friedman?
But echo Ms. Devine's comments about the fire awards luncheon. It was wonderful and extremely well-attended. The community definitely appreciates our fire department. So thanks to everybody who participated. I was invited to attend the Rotary Club this last week, and I went. And it's a great group of people, and they always have very informative speakers.
Which Rotary Club? I'm from Sunrise Rotary.
It's not Sunrise. It was the afternoon, one that meets in the afternoon.
The noon.
Yeah, the noon. The noon Rotary on Thursday. Great group of people, so welcoming, a great speaker. I learned a lot about spinal cord injuries and back pain and things like that. So I want to thank them for inviting me. And I want to mention a kind of an event, kind of a council meeting we had last week. Mayor Sinanian instituted a city council in your neighborhood program, where we're going to be kind of taking city council on the road. And our first one was at Pacific Edison last Thursday night. It's televised, so you can watch it either, you can stream it on our website, or you can watch it in reruns. It was well-attended. It was a very nice format. There were several issues that were on the agenda. We had a presentation from staff, and then a lot of discussion from council, and a lot of comments, and back and forth from the community. It was a very good format. The only complaint that we heard was that they would like more outreach, that people didn't find out about it sooner, which is certainly something we can work on. Tom Lorenz, our PIO, commented that was the first time he's ever attended a council meeting where there was applause at the end. And it was really, not because everybody agreed on everything, but because there was so much back and forth that everybody really felt like they got something tangible out of the meeting. I commend Mr. Sinanian for starting this. I hope that we continue them, that we get more people from each neighborhood, which is the idea, people from the immediate neighborhood to attend, and we'll talk about issues specific to those neighborhoods. My only suggestion would be to maybe experiment with more of a town format kind of feeling to it. And I don't know whether, were the speakers televised? Does anybody know? Were they on camera?
They were.
A few of the people suggested to me that they not be on camera because they felt that, you know, when you want to be on camera, people can come here and they can be on camera. But there are a lot of people who are shy and want to ask questions and want to have the discussion, but maybe don't want to be filmed, that wouldn't mind their voices being heard, but didn't feel comfortable being filmed in that kind of a venue. So just something for us to consider, maybe asking the audience or asking people what they would like before they ask questions. I think there's different ways we could do it. But it was good. I'm looking forward to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. And I did attend many of the events my colleagues mentioned. But on Saturday morning, as part of the Metro Board, we drove the symbolic Golden Stake in the Gold Line, which completes all the track for Phase 2, which runs from the Sierra Madre Station in Pasadena all the way to Azusa. What comes next is the final electrical work, and the cars will be placed on and tested. And in approximately one year, that next section will be running. And the goal is to extend it also towards Glendale, through Glendale, hit Bob Hope Airport, and connect to the Orange Line. And my colleagues have asked for an update, and we'll make sure we get an update on Metro's intentions with this east-west corridor passing through Glendale in the near future. Next week, I'm not going to be at the city council meeting. I will be traveling to Israel. My wife, who is co-anchor on Channel 22, Spanish Language News, will be conducting an interview with Benjamin Netanyahu, which is rather exciting. And I hope to stick around and maybe meet some of the local officials and maybe form a friendship, city relationship with one of the cities in Israel, maybe Jerusalem, which would be very exciting if that's possible. But I will be back the very next week in the evening session to continue business. This is a trip that, in which no city funds are expended. All the expenses, at least on my end of the ticket and lodging, come from my own, my own personal funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. While we're on the issue of transportation, and I wasn't here for the last meeting, and I'm not sure if anyone spoke about the fact that the California Transportation Commission held its monthly meeting in the city of Glendale. And we, first of all, it was great to have them here because it's, you know, it sort of signifies of how important Glendale is for California, and transportation matters. And we tried to accentuate the fact that they're. And we tried to accentuate the fact that they were in Glendale because I hope, and I get the sense from all my colleagues, that transportation and accessibility of transportation for Glendaleans is going to be a very important issue in the short term and the long term and is going to be a focal point for us in the future. So, we, Councilmember Najarian addressed the commission as an MTA member. I addressed them and welcomed them as the mayor of Glendale. And in the, in the evening, we organized a little reception for the commissioners and many other people involved in the transportation world. And again, we showcased the Larry Zarian Transportation Center as sort of the gateway to everything transportation related to Glendale. On October 16th, I'm sorry, October 17th, I had the honor of speaking to Glendale Kiwanis. What a great group of people. Had the chance to present the state of the city to them and basically lay out all the important things that are happening, what to look forward to and what are the key issues for our city. I thank you, Kiwanis, for having a Rotarian in your midst and letting me talk without too much booing. I'm kidding, actually, there was no booing. October 18th, a group called the Los Angeles Region Planning History Group held its meeting in Glendale at our Brand Library. And again, they were discussing airports and aviation. And it's no incident that they were holding their airports and aviation meeting in the city of Glendale since we are currently a member of the Glendale Burbank Pasadena Airport Authority. And we also happen to house the first-ever airport in all of Southern California, which is currently undergoing a major remodeling effort by Disney Studios. And I promise you, when, when that facility opens up now as sort of a museum, you will all be very, very pleased. Also, on the 18th, I attended the Holy Family School Parish Fiesta, very well-attended event. A lot of people were there and the kids were very happy just to have a chance to have a good time. Also, on the 18th, I attended the Glendale Islamic Center for, it was Mosque Day. One of our city clerks interns was there. Ms. Sadiqi was there and she's just outside now with her family. It's, it was, it was a good visit. I got the chance to learn that it's the biggest Islamic center in an area stretching miles and miles in each direction from Glendale. And there was good community presence. We had people from the synagogue. We had people from various churches and we had a chance to sit and have meaningful conversations, all of us together. And finally, October 19th, I had a chance to help close the Relay for Life event, an event which was organized by American Counsel Society and our own school, you know, school students. I did the closing, I believe. Some of my, my fellow council members were there for the opening. Yes, some people from the city were there for the opening. In any case, it was a great event because they ended up raising over $67,000 for cancer research, for transportation for cancer patients, for lodging for cancer patients who need the transportation and lodging in order to get good care and various other, other purposes associated with fighting the fight against cancer. So, this year, I think the total from 2005 until this year is over $850,000 raised by Relay for Life in the city of Glendale, and that's an amount that we can be proud of. And each year, that amount is going to grow. That's all I have. May we have the next item on the agenda?
Six community event announcements, three minutes.
And I have one speaking card from Sharon Townsend for Glendale Healthy Kids.
Mayor and City Councilmember and staff, I'm actually wearing two hats tonight. The first hat is, oh, you can tell I've done this before. As a proud member of the Fire Foundation Board, and I'm here to let you know that we have our first Fire Department calendar, and it's not the type of calendar that you might think it is. It's actually a beautiful highlight of the department strategically highlighting all the works that they do for this city. And this is in an effort to raise funds to place strategically throughout the city defibrillators in all the buildings and public places. And without that hat, I am now Glendale Healthy Kids. For about the last 17 years, we've held Guess Who's Coming to Dinner, which has been a fundraiser for us to raise much-needed funds to help our children that do not have healthcare or insurance. And we had our first sold-out event this past Sunday. We have five more opportunities for you to participate. I passed out cards last week. I'll give you some more. But I have a special friend here and a fellow Rotarian, Sunrise Rotary, that would like to describe one of the very special dinners.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Fire Department is proud to be participating once again with Glendale Healthy Kids and doing one of the dinners on November the 1st. It's a Mexican theme this year. One of our chefs in the station, he's already preparing the menu, Trevor Welch, and he does a great job with that. And it's gonna be a lot of fun that night. Everyone's gonna have a good time. And, you know, I'm proud to say that the Fire Department, we've been participating with the Healthy Kids, I think, almost since the beginning. In the 90s, we've been doing these dinners and our guys really rally up for it and just have a great time. So, if you haven't gotten your tickets for Guess Who's Coming to Dinner, if I was gonna pick one, I would pick the one on November 1st that's being done by the Fire Department at the Home of Greg Astorian, who graciously opened up his home so we can come in that evening.
Thank you very much. I personally wanna thank Harold and his department. They've been great friends of ours. And I hope you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope everyone joins in. What's next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Seven, adoption of ordinances. 7A ordinance amending Section 16.04.100 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 regarding compliance with the Subdivision MAP Act for Financing of City and/or Housing Authority-funded Projects. This was introduced on October 14, 2014 by Councilmember Weaver.
Anything to add?
No, sir.
No.
Move 7A.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Thank you. Next, please.
Eight action items. 8A, city manager regarding consideration of resolution to join the U.S. Conference of Mayors to help eradicate bullying from the community. One, resolution of support.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Sinanian, this is something you brought back from the Conference of Mayors. And so, certainly Christine Powers is here if you have contextual questions, but you can certainly give the presentation if you, if you like.
I certainly don't have anything contextual, but...
Well, this is...
Contextual? Okay. Well... Unfortunately, bullying is...
We all know what it is.
We all know what it is, but it's worth saying a few words about it. I think in, we can go back to childhood and say that some of us have, I think all of us have come into contact with some degree of bullying. Some of us have been victims. Some of us have been victimizers. Others have been just bystanders who watched and done nothing. Others maybe have been people who haven't stood by and who've actually interceded and done something about it. It seems like times change, but the concept of bullying just doesn't go away. And I remember just a few years ago, I wanna say four or five years ago, there was a young, a student at C V High School who committed suicide and it was determined that it was a result of bullying. So, bullying has very real consequences for people as it has potentially life-altering impacts on people. It has huge impact on people's mentality, on their, on their self-awareness, their self-worth. So, these resolutions that call for, you know, anti-bullying efforts and just, just for no reason, just for declaratory purposes are very important because they draw our attention towards the horrible effects of bullying and how it's not okay and how we should all do our part to eradicate it.
And, and as directed, we would also have all the resources available, both in conjunction with the school district and at the public libraries, as directed, sir.
Very good. We have a...
Mr. Mayor, move 8A1.
I'll second.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
8B, Chief of Police Regarding Medical Services for Arrestees and Prisoners. Submitted October 13. One motion executing agreement with Vital Medical Services LLC for a one-year term and an option to renew two additional terms for a period of one year in the amount up to $69,000 per year.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. Ms. Devine?
I need to recuse myself from this item because I have received a campaign contribution from one of the officers of this company.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Devine.
I can tell you very quickly, sir, that, and I'm sure the chief would validate as well, that one of the largest calls for service that we get in this particular district here is for calls for medical service at the, or does she have to?
Apparently, we have, Mr. Weaver's also conflicted out.
I'm conflicted too. I received a campaign contribution.
Okay, why don't we take a second? My colleagues would like to take a closer look at...
But it doesn't affect us if it's from our, our election, right? Because it was a couple of years ago.
One year.
Correct. Any contribution received for a election for council within the past year.
Right. Does that still impact you, Mr. Weaver?
Coming one, yes.
Okay. I understand. Very well.
Just for the record, so we know, under our ordinance, that doesn't, requires the council members to recuse, but not necessarily step out of the room so they can remain here while the remainder of the council has the discussion.
Very well.
And it only affects municipal elections.
Correct. As I stated, it's only for city council races or for city clerk or city treasurer, not other races.
So, yeah, very quickly, sir, we have the calls that go to the jail. That does tie up resources, both in the P D as well as at the Fire Department for the wall time, as we call it, with our paramedics that would transport to the hospital should that become necessary. What we have here before you is something of, again, this innovation, this streamlining effort that we have embarked upon to find private contractors that would come in to provide this level of service, albeit on a very limited scale. And the chief can talk about or can elaborate if you have questions with who this outfit is, the circumstances under which they would provide that service, but ostensibly to take the burden off of our paramedic crews. We have the opportunity to move out of this contract if it doesn't work well for us. But as you can see by the price, it is rather limited and I think represents a very cost-effective use of dollars and resources so that we don't tie up paramedics and officers transporting prisoners to and from the hospital.
Very well. Questions? Yes. Mr. Najarian?
Chief, what are the nature of the medical services that we provide to these? Are these a result of jail fights or getting shanked or, I mean...
Most of the, most of the calls, about 95% of the calls or medical services through the jail are for complaints of pain. Prisoners will say they have chest pains. They may have a pre-existing condition. It may be to provide a blood sample for, under the influence of controlled substance, DUI, those type of injuries that, and a lot of the times, the prisoners will play the game of complaint about an injury in hopes that we won't take them to the hospital and we will cite them out, which is common practice for a lot of cities. In Glendale, we don't do that. We will maintain the prisoners. So, we, we've had approximately 150 calls needing the Fire Department to come to our jail in the last 12 months to provide transportation to the hospital. Police officers have spent over 2,000 hours, two officers at a time, waiting at the hospital to provide medical care. Our medical professionals, the hospitals in our city do a great job, but most of the time, these prisoners do not need to be transported to a hospital to be cleared for booking. So, we began looking, like all departments, we're looking at ways that we could redo the way we provide our service in a more efficient and effective manner. Last year, at the L.A. County Police Chiefs Conference, Vital Medical Services made a presentation to us. They are the first of their kind in the county of Los Angeles to provide medical services on an on-call basis as well as provide full-time medical coverage during times when we have the highest incidence of bookings and medical calls for service. I had a similar company doing something, but not as extensive in my previous agency, and it saved us a tremendous amount of time. It cuts down on some of the game-playing that goes on by prisoners who think they can get out of custody by complaining and trying to make our job more difficult. This will keep firefighters on the street, paramedics available for more vital medical calls, and it'll also keep Glendale police officers on the street in their beats, providing protective patrols and doing true law enforcement services. Another option that some cities do is they hire full-time medical staff. That's extremely expensive. This is a more efficient and effective way. The city of Glendale will be the first police department in L.A. County to embark on this type of efficiency. We believe it's gonna set a model for others to follow. And we have spent six months working out the details. We've had great support from our city attorney's office. Commander Goldman has done an extensive job dealing with the company as well as the company themselves, being very, very accommodating to meet the needs of our organization, both financially as well as the workload that will require. The Glendale Jail is the third-largest municipal jail in the county of Los Angeles in terms of the number of bookings that we do. Yes?
I have two questions. First, how many inmates do we have on average, any given time?
On any given day, there's probably an average occupancy of about 25 to 30. It depends on the day of the week because when the courts are closed, prisoners will stay in custody. So, our weekends can rise.
Well, 150 a year is a lot when you have 25 people a day.
Yes.
My other question is, how do you guarantee the safety of the ambulance drivers of a given, if you're not sending an officer? Or are you sending an officer?
Yes, two officers accompany each prisoner. So, one officer may ride in the ambulance and a second officer follows in a police car and they ride. And if the prisoner, usually what happens is they're dropped off at the hospital and the fire personnel are released. We remain with two officers at the hospital with the prisoner.
But now, you wouldn't be tying up fire resources at all? It would be the paramedics and the officers?
Now, Vital Medical Services will be at the jail and they'll provide all the medical intervention in the jail facility. So, we won't need to call in officers off the street. We won't need to call any firefighters. It will be nurse practitioners and physician assistants that will provide the medical care for what we believe to be about 95% of the medical services required by our jail.
And if they feel that there really is a need to transport to the hospital, then you have the ability to do that then?
Absolutely. Then we will use the traditional transportation and we will provide that for, and there will be some. That is inevitable based on the population that we see coming into our jail currently because a lot of the, you know, individuals we have don't have medical care. So, when they come in contact with us and we bring them into custody, some of them look at it as a free opportunity for us to provide that medical care. By providing the medical care prior to booking, what we also plan to do is, and we're exploring, trying to build a prisoner for the services. And we'll see if we, if that will be possible also to do at a later date.
I understand how this makes sense. This is, I mean, just numbers-wise, it's the right thing to do. But why this company? Why not, why not some other one?
That's the only one.
We, we've not found another company. This is a brand-new concept that's been started and we have representatives from the company here with us today. And they found, well, members of the company, the president, John New, is retired chief of Torrance Police Department. So, as a chief of police, he saw this need and realized this. So, collaboratively, the group came together and said, "Here's a need that we don't currently have for municipal jails." And they formed this company to do this. So, they are the only company that is currently able to provide this type of service in Los Angeles County.
And I'm happy to take, chief, I trust you 100%, I'm happy to take your word for it, but going through a formal process, an RFQ, sort of makes it formal so that we know for a fact, no one applied, no one came forward that, that satisfied the requirements.
Yeah, with, with no disrespect to the, to the contractor that's being recommended, that's why we're going with a very short term. Because I do think as a niche market that you will see with the growth of, continued growth of healthcare, you will see this type of service expand and those providers will be present in the marketplace. At this point, it is very, very unique.
That's why we did the one-year contract with the ability to renew for two additional and we gave a 60-day convenience cancellation clause. So, for any reason, the city decides that we don't want to... So, for any reason, the city decides that we don't want to continue with this contract service, we have 60 days to give notice and we can get out. And that can be that other competitors come to the market and provide a superior service at a better price for us, or if the service does not meet the needs that we have.
So, in terms of just hard numbers, can we say how much this is going to save the city?
What we're doing is, there's no additional cost to the city. All the funds, the $69,000 that were asked to be appropriated every year for this contract are existing funds budgeted in the police department for medical services now that we provide to Glendale Adventist when we take our arrestees there. But this will be a more economical way, because as you can imagine, when we take a prisoner into the ER, the expense of having that evaluation done to get what we call an okay-to-book, a clearance, so that we can keep the prisoner in our custody and then transfer them to the L.A. County Sheriff's Department for their court appearance, is much more expensive in the hospital setting. So, we're going to be able to stretch our dollars, actually, by doing this type of a service in our jail.
All right. So, one year, and then this will be in front of us again to renew, right? If we want to renew?
If we choose to.
And at that point, I will expect a more formal process, just to make sure that we're not, you know, if, again, if our chief says it's, they're the only ones, and then they're the only ones, but the public needs to know that we did our due diligence and they're the only ones, so.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Eight B, one.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine. Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Next item, please?
Eight C, General Manager of GWP Regarding Prefabricated Panels of Composite Materials Required to Reinforce One Underground Electrical Vault, One Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Executing a Purchase Order with Armokras products incorporated in Amount Up to $102,850.
Yes, Mr. Clerk. Yes, sir, we have one underground vault that needs refurbishment. These are panels that go into that vault for the structure, and I'm sure Mr. Boig can give you the engineering details to that, or Mr. Zern. At this point, Voltec is the only, they have a patent on this actual type of product. So, if we are using this product, we are using them and it's sole source.
You have to use this product.
At this point, but I'll certainly defer to Mr. Zern if there's anything I left out.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's essentially a test. It's a pilot program. We have 1,100 underground vaults. This is one vault. It's a product and a material, as Mr. Ochoa said, that is only available through this company. We want to give it a try. Other utilities have used it. It has proven to be about a third of the cost and significantly less impact on the, during the construction process. So, much less excavation, much less disruption to traffic, much less noise and dust and so forth, and what normally takes about 10 weeks to refurbish a vault, this takes about two. So, we've heard nothing but good things about it. We want to give it a try. Keep in mind, this is the material and the training. Our folks actually do the installation. So, this work, the labor is done by our people, and if this turns out to be successful, we would come back to you to expand that program. In the event that there's other firms that actually provide a product similar, we would include them, but right now, it's just a pilot, a test. We want to put it in, see what it can do, essentially kick the tires. This is an ability for us to see if it really does work for us in Glendale.
Those are expensive tires, $102,000.
Well, but, Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned, to do that in the traditional sense would cost over $300,000, just one vault. So, this is significantly, potentially significantly lowering the cost for us to do this work. And of those 1,100 vaults, we've got a few that need some extensive work, and I think even being proactive and getting this work done ahead of time, not waiting till we have it crumbling and deteriorating, is very prudent on our part. So, it'll be interesting to see how this works for us.
Okay.
I'll move the item. Second.
Okay. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
Next item, please?
Eight D, City Manager Regarding San Fernando Valley Council of Government, One Motion Executing Amendment Joint Powers Agreement.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I will certainly defer to your colleague, Mr. Najarian, as he probably is as well-versed as anyone on this particular matter with respect to the changes to the MOU. He and our deputy city manager, John Toktolyan, are at the point when it comes to issues of the San Fernando Valley COG, so.
Mr. Najarian?
Okay, I'll try to be brief. So, after many years of attempting to organize a San Fernando Valley COG, finally, about four years ago, one was put together. Because there was a lot of, let's say, apprehensive, apprehension between small cities vis-à-vis the city of Los Angeles, the initial JPA required any vote to be a unanimous vote of the COG. That led to a lot of difficulties, because obviously, anything that was mildly controversial would not even make it to the agenda. And the COG wanted to take on more media issues, more controversial, and realize that a change to the JPA rules were in order. So, essentially, what was prepared after a year or so of studying was a change to the rules, which would not require a unanimous vote for any action to go forward. However, at the same time, it was protecting the smaller cities, which are the cities of Burbank, Santa Clarita, San Fernando, and Glendale, from the big gorilla, if you would, the city of Los Angeles. So, any vote would require a combination of at least two of the smaller independent cities, as well as a majority of the L.A. council to be on it, plus a member of the Board of Supervisors casting a vote. So, I would recommend that we adopt this, so we can, with your authority, take it to the COG and vote to approve the change in the JPA.
I'll move it.
Want to make a motion?
That's essentially what. So, I would move to approve motion in eight D, one.
Second.
Okay. Let's have roll call, please. Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, will you read item four C into the record?
General Manager of GWP.
That's what we're going to handle next.
General Manager of GWP Regarding Bowtree Terrace Area Water Main Replacement Project, One Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Executing Contract with JDCO Construction, Inc., in Amount of $1,560,000 Plus 15% Contingency.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, this is a project long time coming. The line at Ambudre Terrace is about 40 years old. It's cast iron. We need to replace it, the new line. We had previously gone out for an RFQ and solicited all of the statements of qualifications from these providers with the intent of doing a design-build contract. We have, at this point, and earlier this year, done a request for proposal. This is what we have before you. We are hoping to negotiate with the firm that's listed here, the CSGO Construction, Inc. Mr. Zern can give you the particulars about this particular project.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to point out, this is exactly the kind of project that I was emphasizing when we were talking about issuing the water bonds, what I called the bread and butter of the water system. This is a distribution system. We can do all that sexy water storage and that, the pump stations, but if we don't have the distribution system in place, then it's pretty, it just doesn't make any sense. And this is a shining example of that. And I get sort of heated about this, because when I was a former director of Public Works, this project stuck in my craw, and we didn't have the same philosophy between Public Works and Water and Power, and now we have the ability to change that. But this particular system has failed six times, seven times, actually, since 2006. Half of those after the streets were repaved. So, a complete infrastructure upgrade to the streets, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, and this line has exploded in at least four places during that particular time. So, you can see why that got me and the current director of Public Works, Mr. Galanian, pretty upset. So, we've been able to go in, and I'll tell you exactly what this was. This is why you have to plan these things out. The pump station was upgraded and produced so much pressure that the old cast iron pipe couldn't take the pressure and started splitting. So, the sooner we get cast iron pipe out of our system and get the ductile iron in, the sooner we're going to have a solid transmission and distribution system, and we won't have to worry about these kind of problems. Very little cast iron pipe left in the city of Glendale, and it's my goal to get most of it done in this particular, with this particular bond and the capital projects associated with that, but certainly, in a short period of time, we will have it all replaced.
You seem very excited about this project.
I love this stuff.
Would you like to do a PowerPoint? Maybe show us some photos of the cast iron?
I don't have one available, but I would be happy to put one together and show you. And Mr. Boig is pretty excited, too, as you can see, or as excited as he gets.
As he gets.
About these things.
That's a relative term.
But we would be happy to show you.
As much as I would love to see the pipes, cast, and the new pipes, I know that you're busy, and I will not burden you with my intense desire to see a long PowerPoint.
That's perfectly okay by me, too.
Of the pipes and the water pressure, but.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Zern, does the city of L.A. have much cast iron pipe?
Oh, a lot of it, sir, a lot of it, and a lot older than this, as you can imagine.
Just about all their breaks are with the cast iron pipes.
Yeah, and in some of those major breaks, you heard 19, the teens and the 20s, cast iron pipe. And cast iron pipe was in use up until about 1960, the late 50s, and then it was replaced with ductile iron, and there's been a couple of iterations of ductile iron pipe that have come through since that time. But for us to rid ourselves of cast iron is my objective. We have, like I said, very, very, a small amount of it left. We've been pretty proactive in getting it replaced, but the sooner we get it done, the better, and this is one in particular that has just bothered me, and I'm glad we're able to fix this, so. With that said, I will answer any other questions you have.
Shall we, oh, do you have a question? So, shall we make him happy?
How do we make the motion on this?
Let's make everyone happy.
Is it, it's not four C, one again, is it?
And Mr. Sinanian, I failed to add, because I know this is of interest to you, is, this is a dispens with competitive bidding because of the very legal, the legal nature of this, since we're not splitting the design and the construction, they aren't being bid separately. It's technically dispensing with competitive bids, but this competitive process, and Mr. Ochoa went through it, is probably more intense than your normal bidding process. We not only put out an RFQ to pre-qualify the firms, so that we knew that the firms that we were going to absolutely could do this work. We weren't, not any fly-by-nights or somebody who said they could, people that had established and resumes that showed they could do it. Then we issued them a request for proposal, which they had to respond to for the specific project. This is very similar to what we did in Adams Hill, which we have just finished, and we are punch-listing that, and I will tell you, we hit the ball out of the park on that one. That's a project that could have gone south any hour of any day, and it turned out to be one of the best projects that we've done. And by the way, it's the same contractor who was successful in this one. So, I think that's the way to go on these larger projects, and so there is the reason for dispensing with the bidding process, but it was very competitive, as competitive, if not more competitive than any process.
Okay, so just, so after the RFQ was done, RFP was held for the project itself?
Correct. We shortlisted five firms. Those five firms were then given an RFP, and of those three firms, put in a proposal. Those three firms were then evaluated, and we made our recommendation.
The works within the engineer's estimate.
Correct. It happens to be the low bid by far.
Okay, so, so some of the key criteria, low bid was still a key criteria?
Oh, absolutely. Cost is a criteria, but also the experience, the ability to work in this particular environment, the type of, you know, you get firms, believe it or not, that put pipe in, but they never put it in a city street, or a densely populated area, or a residential neighborhood where you have to deal with these kind of things. The CSGO is obviously well-versed in that and showed just how good they are in Adams Hill, as you all know, is not an easy place to drive, much less work, so.
So, just bear with me. It sounds like there was quite extensive competitive process, in fact. So, which aspect of it is being dispensed with specifically?
It's technically because we are combining the design and the construction, you are essentially dispensing with one of those two, I guess.
It's not one bid in spec for just the construction work by itself, which is the design and the construction together, which is, so technically outside the bidding to the lowest responsible bidder. That's why we have to follow this process.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
All moved.
Second.
We have the roll call, please. Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
Happy now?
Yeah, and the residents are happy, too, because they know that we actually went through a pretty extensive process, and we're not just giving out a million, almost closer to six contract to a company. It's the company that has prevailed in competitive process. Okay, next.
Under oral communications, five minutes, discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have quite a few cards, so get ready. Okay, Tony Marano, go first, followed by Richard Lebov. State your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to, about your statue for the comfort women issue that you memorialized in one of your parks. That statue is being perceived in the nation of Japan by the people of Japan as an insult and a slight to their honor. Now, I understand your intentions were noble to memorialize the events that took place from 1932 to 1945. However, recently, a new group of comfort women have come forward in South Korea claiming that they were forced by the government to serve from 1950 to 1992. So, the city of Glendale has an opportunity now to demonstrate to the nation of Japan and to the Japanese people your consistency, and that the original statue was not placed there as an insult or a slight to the nation of Japan. So, perhaps you may want to consider placing a second statue for that second group of comfort women. However, then where does it stop? A second statue, a third statue, a fourth statue? So, that's an unreasonable request. So, perhaps the marble slab next to the current statue can incorporate the second group of comfort women. This way, you're memorializing all the comfort women that were forced into this situation as denoted by that statue, and then you're also demonstrating to the people in the nation of Japan that you're not bashing them, that it's not a slight upon their honor, that there is consistency here. I've traveled extensively throughout the nation of Japan, and I've spoken many conferences. I've authored five books in Japan, with a sixth one coming out next month, and I'm constantly asked by the people in Japan, from middle-school students to politicians to surgeons, if that statue is tarnishing the image of Japan in the United States. It's a very big concern, and I try to reassure them all the time that your image in the United States has not been tarnished. So, you also have the opportunity to support this to the people of Japan, that your intentions were noble, were consistent, and you will want to demonstrate further your consistency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, we have your, we have your name for the record?
My name is Tony Marano, M-A-R-A-N-O.
From Mesquite, Texas. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Marano? Okay, next, Mr. Richard Lebov, followed by Kevin Park. Please state your name for the record, Mr. Lebov.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, other council members and city staff. I am Dr. Richard Lebov, 35-year resident of Glendale. Last Tuesday evening, when Mayor Sinanian, you were unfortunately not here, Glendale had a tremendous setback in terms of its reported desire to have historic preservation. It was unfortunate that evening that Ms. Devine's motion to postpone the hearing was defeated, and only three council members were permitted to vote. Mr. Sinanian, how you would have voted, we may never know. Nevertheless, that evening was another example of how the vote and recommendation of commissioners in the city of Glendale are being nullified, or in my thinking, and this may be a strong word, emasculated. I think it is worthwhile to review some of the facts regarding this matter and urge the city attorney to conduct an investigation. First off, this whole matter has been a travesty. Starting from the beginning of this calendar year, I have been repeatedly here trying to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and City Council that the municipal code governing historic districts needed to be tweaked. The reason for this is the confusion that has ensued, i.e. convergence or limbo, as Mr. Ochoa has called it, relative to submission of plans to modify or demolish a house with plans submitted during the time creation of a historic district is in the pipeline and awaiting approval of the city council. You were all horrified initially that a contributing home in a historic district could be razed, but upon further investigation, the submission of additional reports, and the intervention of attorneys, everything changed, with CEQA being interpreted by an assistant city attorney to suit her own purposes. At one point, Ms. Friedman even prevailed on Mr. Hagani to look into this matter, which he stated he started to do only recently, when Mr. Platt was instructed to write his staff report. The staff report was written, but in my opinion, purportedly not released, with the council instructing the community development department to gather additional community input. It took three and a half years of continual and diligent efforts to create the Brockman Park historic district. The Epi's during this time attended meetings and knew that this was in the works. They consulted with Mr. Platt, and he indicated he would work with them in remodeling the house, keeping the original ranch style. Mind you, they had lived there for nine years and have had more than ample time to submit plans but chose to do nothing. In addition, input from neighbors was never considered in this lot, being street to street, both sides should have been considered since both are in the public right-of-way. In other instances, this has been an issue for the planning division but is now being overlooked. If everything goes through a submitted, since only two conditions were added last week, I will be looking at three garages instead of the tranquil landscape that is now there. Yes, Mr. Weaver, the broken tennis court will be gone, but garages are no substitute for greenery on the entire street, which has been an important reminder of what was the original Brockman Park and one of the supporting criteria for creation of the historic I will remind you also once again that this will not be the last time that a request to remodel an historic district occurs. The community development department, planning division already has the plans for the next-door house to add additional garage and office facing Albedrive, again, another public right-of-way. Months ago, Mr. Platt had indicated to me that these plans, in his opinion, fit in very well. The shining star of last week's meeting was clearly Councilmember Devine. Everything she said that evening was on the side of preservation and was presented in a thoughtful and intelligent manner. For that reason, Ms. Devine will surely get my vote in the next election, but Mr. Weaver, now that he has chosen to run again, will not. It's time for him to hang it up. We have had enough with his antics and purported sexual harassment. As to for Mr. Najarian, I will never again vote for him and would urge all members of Glendale interested in historic preservation to do likewise. Finally, we come to the recusal of Ms. Friedman. Yes, it was appropriate for her to recuse herself because of the proximity of her home to 1555 Valley View Road. However, when she blurted out that another reason for recusing herself was that her husband had been hired by the Epi's to do landscaping, I was immediately struck that recusal, in my mind, includes the elimination of financial gain. And it is for that reason I urge you, Mr. Garcia, to conduct an investigation of this matter. It is within possibility that that may have caused her to influence the other council members into voting for the demolition. In conclusion, October 14th, 2014 will be ever regarded as a day that Glendale City Council turned their back on historic preservation in our jewel city.
Thank you, Mr. Lebov.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Friedman did not talk to me at all about this or tried to influence me. I did my homework and I reached my conclusion, and I spelled it out last week. Too bad.
I did not speak to my colleagues to influence them about this project. I told them that I was not going to talk to them or give them any opinion about this project, but, Mr. Garcia, you should feel free to conduct an investigation. If that makes Mr. Lebov feel better, that's perfectly fine with me.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I will corroborate Ms. Friedman's statement that she did not, in any way, shape, or form, speak to me about this issue. Further, I really think that Mr. Lebov has gone too far in claiming that that date, October 14th, was a dark day. This was one house involving one set of homeowners who had applied and gone through the rules we had set, and to assume that council was going to approve any sort of historic district, I think in your terms would be to emasculate council. There is no guarantee that council would vote for any historic district, despite the fact that each and every district that has come before us in the past has been approved. So if that's the sort of, I guess, insults you want to throw at this council, who has supported historic districts wholeheartedly, I'm not sure if you're speaking on your behalf or the entire Historic Preservation Commission or the Historical Society, and I would like to perhaps find out on whose behalf you're speaking, if not just a neighbor who was adjacent to this, who enjoyed some green space, and now will be looking at what I, in my opinion, was a very wasteful and quality design of a home and a garage.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. I'll just simply state that I've had no conversations with Ms. Friedman or any other council member about this matter. Okay, we have next Kevin Park, followed by Andy Chung. Please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Before we begin, we would like to thank each and every one of you for all your time. It truly validates all our efforts thus far that we can speak in front of our community leaders. My name is Kevin Park, and I'm a freshman at Crescent Valley High School. And together with my colleagues, we make up the Global Initiatives Alliance, representing New Hope Academy. We are present to discuss serious and growing threats against local, national, and worldwide food security. I grant that food security is not necessarily the most glamorous of subjects, but we have become passionate about this topic, because food security is really something everyone in this world requires and loves, food. But we also chose this topic because so many people unknowingly threaten our food supply process. A threat that could be mitigated to increase global food stability with simply a more informed decision-making process. Every week for the past few months, our group has been meeting to discuss what we believe are the most significant contributions to the confounding reality that although there is more than enough food for everyone in the world, it's simply not reaching them. We've pinpointed three major causes, including the rapid loss of bees due to colony collapse disorder, poor regulation of genetically-modified organisms, and inefficient agricultural processes. My colleague Andy will elaborate further on these three issues.
Thank you. Are we still on the same clock? Or have you submitted a separate card?
Oh, no, we're, I'm Andy Chung, yeah, okay. "One Day the Future Switched From Being a Promise to Being a Threat," by Chuck Palahniuk. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andy Chung, and I'm a sophomore at La Cañada High School. Our focus topic of food security refers to necessity for people at all times to have access to sufficient, safe, nutritious food to maintain a healthy and active life. According to OneWorldHunger.org, 852 million people on our planet are suffering from hunger, and one-eighth of our global population are suffering from chronic undernourishment. Fortunately, the problem is not that there is not enough food available. The major problem is simply that the available food is not getting to everyone who needs it. The most fortunate and capable nations must stop thinking for themselves. We must be taking more deliberate measures to ensure access to our available food supply. Several other contributions contribute to difficulty of achieving food security, such as colony collapse disorder, lack of GMO regulation, and agricultural inefficiency. Bees help produce more than 30% of our current food supply, but their population, and therefore our sustenance, are being threatened by a phenomenon called colony collapse disorder. GMOs present one possible measure for increasing our global food supply, but must undergo much more testing before we can reasonably consider them as reliable, healthy, or ecologically safe. Lastly, our food production, storage, transportation, and consumption can all be much more environmentally and ecologically efficient. Next, we will elaborate the ideas how these problems contribute to global food insecurity, as well as on what we can all do to make these problems better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chung. Irene Soo is next, followed by Joshua Ri.
The acceptance of bees have always...
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Irene Soo. The acceptance of bees have always been a little troublesome. Many of us may be tempted to say that bees are just annoying little pests, wood stingers, threatening us with their every appearance, but how many people know the true benefits they offer us and the downfalls of losing them? My name is Irene Soo, and I am part of the New Hope Global Initiatives to make a positive change to our environment, specifically trying to help spread awareness on a fast-growing concern, colony collapse disorder. The origin and reason for colony collapse disorder are unknown, but the majority of the time, the blame for the losses to the bee population is on us. For example, pest control rises off of many critters that do not benefit us at all, but unfortunately, they also have drastic impacts on insect populations that we do need, such as bees. If bees were to go extinct, then they won't be able to do what they have done for the past centuries, pollinating our crops. If they were to be gone, the crop production rates would drop and our crop prices would rise dramatically. Because they contribute so much free labor, their disappearance would also be an economic downfall, for bees are responsible for $150 million, $1 million in honey and nearly $15 billion worth of crops. In the last 50 years, our human population has nearly doubled, which means we are consuming that much more food, and yet the bees are dying away. So altogether, no matter how much bees may seem to be a nuisance in our lives, they still benefit us far more than they harm us. We ask for your awareness and support in advancing new policies and regulations intended to help protect bees and remind others what a significant role bees play in our lives. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Soo. Joshua Ri, followed by Julie Choi. Please state your name for the record.
Joshua Ri. While Irene touched a little on her effect on the natural world, I'd like to delve a little further into the impact of genetically-modified foods. My name is Joshua Ri, and I'm an eighth grader at La Cañada High School. I know that the topic of genetically-modified organisms, or GMOs, is highly controversial. I'm not here to condemn or endorse a particular practice, but rather to acknowledge the promises made by the GMO-supporting community and address the potential benefits of GMOs. Corporations specializing in GMOs have made predictions, promises even, about GMO's potential to solve problems that have stumped the world's brightest for years. The supposed mission of one GMO corporation, for example, is to feed the rural community. They have, however, spent a great deal of time suing farmers for wind pollination and developing a sterile seed that prevents reproduction of their genetically-modified crop. These actions indicate a concern for profit instead of the increasing access to food for the impoverished. This is particularly damaging, given that when tested, GMOs have resulted in a multitude of cases that result from disease to death. In rats, for example, GMOs lead to widespread tumors, horrifying organ damage, and premature death. In humans, allergies, reproductive disorders, tumors, chronic illnesses, et cetera. Despite all this, however, the potential upside to GMOs are tremendous. Take golden rice, for example, a type of rice infused with carotenes, and consequently a substantial increase with vitamin A. Across the globe, an estimated 19 million women, pregnant women, and 190 million children suffer from vitamin A deficiency, or VAD. Golden rice can now provide essential nutrients to populations lacking variety in their diet. With about 10% to 20% of golden rice supplemented into a diet every day, women and children can almost nullify the effects of VAD. Innovations like this have the potential to save and improve millions of lives, but there's a problem. As mentioned earlier, genetically-modified foods do not have, have not developed enough to guarantee such benefits, but because there is currently no legal requirement for GMOs labeling, and the average consumer would not know what he or she is truly buying or if it's safe. Our global initiative standpoint is not that GMOs are horrible. On the contrary, we truly believe that GMOs will lead us into solving our world's food security crisis. However, significant research must come prior, and until such time, we must ensure that consumers' safety through regulations. So today, we ask you in pushing for policies and regulations that will protect consumers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ri. Julie Choi? Please state your name for the record.
Oh, good evening. My name is Julie Choi, and I am currently a sophomore attending Crescent Valley High School. Within our global initiatives project, food efficiency is one of our most distinct causes when it comes to food security and the need to lessen the hunger gap within the U.S. Whether you realize it or not, you have lots of, you possess lots of power to support us in our efforts to improve food efficiency. Voting yes for Proposition 1 will help us conserve water and positively impact California's current drought. By conserving water, we can increase our ability to grow more crops, thereby increasing our food supply to those in need. However, adding to the complexity of the issue, Feeding America stated in 2013 that 49.1 million people in the U.S. currently live in food insecure households. That amounts to about 15% of the U.S. population currently living in hunger. That's absolutely ridiculous. Common Dreams emphasized that we already grow enough food for 10 million people, and points out that food, hunger, is caused by poverty and inequality, not scarcity. To combat this effect, we must decrease deprivation and increase our access for food to the hungry. In fact, NPR stated on a program in September that supermarkets and restaurants currently serve up to more than 400 million pounds of food each year, and nearly a third of it never makes it to a stomach. One way to help us out is by donating money to agencies such as Oxfam America, UN World Food Program, and CARE. If you don't have the ability to donate, you can always go on websites such as FreeRice.com, and they will donate 20 grains of rice to those in need, when you just play simple vocabulary games. And the simplest and easiest step that you can take that will create the best impact is by reducing food waste. Don't overbuy, just buy the amount you need. By doing these little steps, we can create chain reactions, and our organization genuinely hopes that those chain reactions will start with every, everyone, each and every one of you. And thank you. Thank you for having us today, and I know it's hard on a Tuesday night, and you've got, you guys have had a rough day, and, but we really appreciate you coming out and listening to our cause. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for coming out on a Tuesday night and talking to us about this very important issue. I don't know if you're getting graded on this or not, but you...
Should we grade them?
You should all get As.
Are they the last ones?
I think they get As.
Are they our last speakers?
They are the last speakers.
I just want to say that what a wonderful evening this was. We began with the neighborhood coming forward and bestowing gifts upon us, and thanks to the community and our service, and to end with these bright, young people educating us and the community. It was quite an evening. Thank you so much for being here.
And you noticed that during the presentation, I think it was Mr. Ri, he said that, "I'm not here to advocate for or against GMO," and I thought, okay, well, let's see how long that actually holds. And he wasn't. I mean, he presented both sides in a very balanced way, so that was very impressive. That's all the speakers we have for tonight. What's next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
New business?
We have no new business. What is next?
We adjourn. Second?
And we adjourned at 7:39 PM.